Commissioners meeting to order, please, with a moment of silent meditation. Okay, could we have the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second, we adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, Melissa?
Yes, sir. Item number four on your agenda is employee introduction. I tried to do this at your last meeting, and Matt was not able to be here with us, but I am so pleased to introduce to you all our new town planner, Matt Farmer. Matt, stand up and give a wave. We are so happy that Matt is here. He, of course, started working with us and was teleworking, but now he has relocated to temporary housing for this final month, and then he'll have a, he'll move to more permanent housing in August. But Matt has 15 years of experience. We are really happy that he has joined our team. He's jumped right in and is a wealth of professional experience and knowledge, so we're super thrilled. I think I am the most thrilled to have him here. But welcome, Matt. We are so happy that you are with us.
Thank you.
Welcome, Matt. Well, it's nice having you. Hope you enjoy us, and we get used to you. We know we will. You're about the businessman around, I can tell you that. No, other than the lady over here. All right, let's see. Can we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
There's a motion, a motion second, we approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, go ahead, Melissa.
Yes, sir. Item number six on your agenda is public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or take any action on items brought up during this period. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the lectern and identify yourself so that your statements can be recorded.
All right, now open for public comment. Anyone like to be heard? Someone step up.
Right here, sir. Yes, sir, and that microphone is already on for you.
Yeah, my name is Dr. Jung, J-U-N-G. That's not Chinese, it's German. But anyway, I've lived here in Piris Cove, in the town of Manio, for about 12 years. And it's come to my attention that the medical situation is in sad need of overhaul and resurrected. This came to my attention just a few days ago, but it's been in, in the works for a long time. I know Ronnie Sloan made a pitch on Friday to the public as to what was going to be done in the Manio office. But basically, it's a Band-Aid approach. And it's been a Band-Aid approach. The main thing, why don't people want to say? The excuse I get is that housing is too high, they have too many debts incurred in medical school. And that may be true. I'm basically an orthopedic surgeon, but went to school in Boston. Not to be derogatory toward the southern schools, because all my serious care, I get at UNC or Duke. But it's nice to have the hospital here as a stopgap measure. And a lot of people see that. I mean, this is beginning of the influx of tourists, and they see the hospital, and unfortunately, they think it can provide more than it can. And I've had that experience personally. So I'm seriously interested in the health of the medical system, and this was brought to my attention when trying to get my prescription renewed at one of the local pharmacies in Manio, Island Pharmacy. Kevin was trying to be preemptive and presented this to the Outer Banks Hospital, not the Outer Banks Hospital, but the Manio Clinic, if you want to call it that, last Thursday, because he knew it took a long time to be ratified. They have doctors in Greenville that are providing a tertiary service to ratify prescriptions. And as of five minutes ago, there was still no prescription ratified, so I could not have my prescription refilled until it was. So then that proceeded to Dr. Waldron's office, and then I became aware of Dr. Van Smith. He was the senior vice president. So I had a long conversation with him, and he called me back, which was surprising. He was the previous president of the Outer Banks Hospital. I think most people know that, Van Smith. And we had a long conversation, just about where we were going and what the hospital was doing or not doing, and the medical service and the primary care docs that were unavailable. People had to fend for themselves and travel 80 miles in the days of expensive gasoline. That's a long way for primary care. That's totally unnecessary. There's something missing here somewhere. Why doesn't, why do not people want to stay here that have been trained here? Trained at ECU? There's something missing. I'm not sure I have all the answers, but I've been in medicine for a long time. I'm basically an orthopedic surgeon, but I was in academic medicine for five years, and then chairman of the Department of Orthopedics in New London, Connecticut, for another 30 years. So I have a little information or a little experience. I'm now 85, but some people wish maybe I would not stay active, but I still am. I still have an active license in Connecticut where I practiced last. I had a couple of mini-strokes, so they were all missed at the Outer Banks Hospital. That's what brought this to a head. That's why they now have the ability to use TPA, which is a clot buster, which has saved a lot of people's lives. I don't really have anything else to add, but I'd be happy to give any comments or experience to any group that may be formed in this arena.
Thank you, Dr. Jung. We, of course, you've probably heard, we can't comment back, but we appreciate you coming. We appreciate you being a resident of Manio, and you'll probably be hearing from us eventually. Thank you for coming. Next?
My name's Stuart Weskett. I live at 103 John Borden Street. I have lived on that corner for seven decades plus. I wasn't born in Derrick County.
Born in Kirkville.
Because that was the closest clinic at the time, but anyway, so I'm considered to be an Outer Banks native, and my family has run the Dolphin Tour boat on the waterfront for, this is our 28th season. You may not be familiar with that, but we've been doing it a while, and Todd may be aware that we bring a lot of people to Manio that otherwise, they come over here to do Dolphin watch and fall in love with Manio. We get a lot of comments on that. I want to give the public works a shout out. Our public works outfit is a nine and a half on a scale of 10, and there's just some small things that just happens, but there's not another town around, I guarantee you, that's got the public works people and the, and the public, the people that work in the town hall that the town of Manio has, and that's the reason a lot of people are here. I'm here basically because of the incidents that happened during the concert last week, and I talked to Todd about it, and Todd said he'd heard nothing but positive comments. Well, he doesn't live on my street.
Well, is there?
But on Croatan and Devon Street, traffic was, the cars were parked in the street. If an emergency vehicle had to get through there, it would have been difficult. The buses that were shuttling people back and forth in parking lots, I ran four, personally ran four cars off parking on the corner in front of a fire hydrant, and if it was there, the bus couldn't make the turn. Now, our police were overwhelmed. There needs to be something done, please, with the promoters, and I understand that there has been some outreach made to the promoters, and they're going to work in on some of this, but there needs to be something in place when there is a problem that we can address at the time. And while the concert was going on, there was some language that went on during the concert that was completely uncalled for. I don't think the children really should have heard some of the things that were said, and that's another problem with that. I can hear in my house as good as you can on stage, just for whatever reason. And like I say, the police, of course, they're overwhelmed. They're overwhelmed, overworked. Luckily, you have a man 24/7. But I see boats parked at the ramp. There are two or three days, they don't see that. Parking on the yellow curbs, I think, could be, a lot of that could be resolved with putting no park in there. In 50 states, it's illegal to park against a yellow curb, but people will plead innocence. My wife has volunteered to write tickets if you want her to do that, but...
Thank you, Stuart. Stuart is also a former commissioner of Manio, been a long time resident and commissioner for many years past. Thank you. Next?
Sorry, me again. Jamie Anderson, and I've owned downtown books in Manio for 10 years. Three years ago, the town of Manio began working with the North Carolina Main Street and Rural Planning Center to begin the path through the Downtown Associate Community Program towards becoming a Main Street community. I've been part of this project since its inception from the first tour of Manio for staff from the center, when we tried to show them how great our town was and yet how much better it could be with their tutelage. There have been many meetings since then, online public forums, asset identifying Zooms, then we were finally able to start getting together in person for vision planning workshops. And for those of us on the committee with help from the state and all the townsfolk who participated in the process, lots of hours have been spent polishing the vision statement, the economic development strategies and goals. They're all part of the Economic Development Implementation Plan. So last Friday, we got the letter, as you all know, and Manio is now a Main Street community. So the planning may be over, but in reality, the work has just begun. There are retail surveys and wayfinding research to be done, merchant associations to pull together, ordinances to revisit, branding and marketing campaigns to create. It will all make Manio the best place to live and an absolute must-stop on the Outer Banks. Tonight, I ask you to commit 110% to the Main Street program, the visions and strategies it entails. Commit to learning as much as you can about the program, and then become an ambassador by telling your friends, neighbors, colleagues, and other businesses about it. Commit to Melissa and her staff, and let them know you are prepared to give them whatever it takes to ensure the success of this program. Commit to Michelle. Part of her position is acting as the official liaison for the program, but she's also your public information officer and program manager. She wears a lot of hats and has a lot of roles for just one person. If she comes to you and asks for assistance, please see that she gets it in whatever form she needs. Commit to this by ensuring that the rest of the town's boards and committees fully understand the vision and program. Commit to it by looking at everything that comes before you, from this night out, in light of being a Main Street community, but sitting back and asking, does this fit with the vision statement? We've worked long and hard on this, and now we are officially at the starting block. My fellow committee members and I have been committed to this for three years. Commit with us in making Manio an outstanding and successful Main Street community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next?
Al, from Manio. I'm gonna keep coming back and talking about the crises, the emergency, healthcare, and I'm encouraged for y'all that attended the meeting here in Manio, that they hoped, I think it was very informative, and it was exciting to hear the comments of Mr. Walker and suggestions that he had made about moving forward in this circumstance that we're in. When I hear the word crises and emergencies, most of us have lived here, have lived in those type of emergencies and crises. What we relate to is a hurricane. There's a plan. Before the hurricane comes, they start putting things on the news so you can do preparedness. After the wind stops blowing, there's a plan to help people get in a house, take care of their house. There's a plan. And that's what I'm coming to talk to the town about, instead of just coming and saying, y'all do something. I'm coming forward with trying to give a suggestion of some semblance of a plan, and it's not solely my idea, but it's of Mr. Walker. And Mr. Walker heads up the Physicians Health Foundation. I could have that wording a little bit wrong, but this is what he does. This is his business, is placing physicians in rural communities. We've recently seen the newspaper, the part of the plan from ECU Health, and it saddens me, because what I understand, they are moving a doctor from Hatters Village to here. What's the plan for Hatters Village? They need medical as, as much as we do. What's the plan for the doctor that's coming here? We're losing a PA, so we've got one doc and a part-time doc, but there's no PA. I tried to get an appointment today, and I was told I don't have a doc. My mother does. How do they choose who gets back on the rolls of being seen as a patient? Not me, because I'm fairly healthy, but there's some that are not fairly healthy. What's their plan? Okay? So, to wrap it up, what I'm going to suggest for y'all's consideration, as Mr. Walker said, is a stakeholders group, and what would that consist of? Town officials, county officials, physicians, a patient representative, members from ECU or Chesapeake, and I would strongly suggest maybe Sheila Davis, the Director of Health Department. In closing...
You gotta change that.
In closing, what I'd like to make a point of, your manager wrote a letter to Mr. Walden, okay, he's head of ECU Health, asked him to come meet tonight. He's probably streaming, but he's busy. He didn't even respond to you. Mr. Bailey responded, saying he isn't going to come to your meeting. This is concerning for crises and an emergency, because we have no means by which to get in front of this very important group of people that are controlling a tremendously important part of our lives. We have no way to access these people if they would not show up and hear our concerns. So thank you for your consideration and your later deliberations.
Thank you, Mal. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to be heard? Public comment period. Say what you want, cause aside if you want to. All right, well, now close the public comment period. Go ahead, Melissa.
Yes, sir. Item number seven on your agenda is the public hearing for the 2022 Camel Land Use Plan, and we have Jay McLeod from Stewart, Inc., who was the consulting firm that we contracted with for the development of the plan, who is here and is going to start this public hearing by giving us a presentation.
Good evening. It's great to be here again. Always love an excuse to come out to Manio. So I just wanted to kind of run quickly through the highlights of the comprehensive plan process. Thank you. And then make sure I'm here to answer questions or take comments or anything that you may want to discuss and be a resource to that. There we go. So just to kind of recap, Stewart is a, you know, a two-state firm at this point with several different areas of expertise, of which community planning is one. And actually, since we've kind of gone back to a hybrid office, hybrid work environments, we're in the office some and not, I was speaking with someone in our structural engineering group, which was how Stewart started off, and he said to me, oh yeah, Manio, I think we did that amphitheater out on that island. And it turns out that the CEO is right there, the founder, Willie Stewart, and he was just looking into these plans the other day. They were in his office in a box, and he went and grabbed them and pulled them up, and so I scanned them in and sent them over. It's just kind of interesting to see how, this is back in, like, I think 97 or something, but it's just interesting to see how long Stewart has been kind of working in this community and working with y'all, and then now I have a chance to come back around and, you know, help y'all with this plan update, which has really been a pleasure. So thank you for giving me that small aside. We kicked off in August of last year, and you can see, it's been kind of, you can see the progression of the project, and here we are kind of at the, in July, looking at the local adoption of the plan, and then that would lead into the state, see our Coastal Resources Conservation Commission certification process. Each one of those little triangles and hexagons is a kind of a public engagement or a public touch point or a meeting of staff or the steering committee, which was the planning board. This is kind of how the development of the plan has come along. You can see kind of where, you know, we're not quite at the end, because that involves the Coastal Resources Commission certification, but we are kind of towards the, the end of the kind of project arc. And although a comprehensive plan in general kind of houses some or all of these elements, in Manio, it also has to be a Coastal Area Management Act compliant plan, which means it has to touch on these five land use management topics, and I'll get to those in a second, but basically addressing issues that the state and federal government have seen important in the management of coastal resources. One of the things I really like about this project and working with y'all is we hadn't initially planned for a big public meeting at the very kickoff, but it kind of evolved organically, and it made a lot of sense, and I was really excited to have the event that we did at Festival Island in that beautiful building with y'all, and have the public come and get their opinions straight out of the gates and talk to people in the community right at the beginning. I feel like that was really important to the process and helped shape it from the very beginning as a community plan. I do want to make sure I give a special shout out to the members of the leadership committee who volunteered a lot of time to review all the information that came along with this and joined us at most of the public meetings, as many of you all did as well. They really spent a lot of time going through these document, this document, and helping us make sure that it was tempered with local perspective. That kind of led to the community survey, which was really well-attended. We had over 300 responses. That's a really good rate, if you think about it, for a town this size. And that really helped guide the development of the vision and goals, which then informed the rest of the plan. And then kind of these three themes emerged through that process as well. Then we had the visioning open house right here in this room, which was also really well-attended and got a lot of great input from a lot of people. It talked about a lot of different issues kind of facing the town and how those might be shaped moving forward. We took that information, that kind of firmed up the community vision and the goals, and ultimately, the future land use map and the recommendations and the policies and the action items all need to point back to one of these goals and try and achieve them so that the future looks closer to this than it does to, to not this, right, than not the vision for the town. And that's ultimately what kind of the circle here is. It starts with the community, it gets refined through analysis of existing conditions and data, and then it firms up into a community vision and goals, and then the recommendations are then again reviewed by the community, and those feedback and point towards the goals, towards achieving that goal. One of those things is the future land use map and character areas. These were refined, simplified a little bit, but with the nuance kind of kept in place. The sea level rise overlay was kind of refined to be, kind of could bring forward what had been done in the past, but bring it forward with newly updated data, so you can kind of have that as a tool in land use decision-making as you move forward. And then, like I said before, the Coastal Area Management Act policies and actions comprise those five kind of categories, but in addition, we had a lot of input about other things that are important to members of the community that aren't necessarily within the Camel Wheelhouse, and so we made sure we captured those. They're in there, and they should be pursued, you know, as, as you all see fit and when and where it's appropriate. And that's kind of a quick recap of a very long document that has some technical language, but also hopefully is accessible enough that it can be used for guidance moving forward. And I'm here to, to be a resource if I can, or to take direction if that's what you choose. Thank you.
Melissa, how you want to handle this?
So at this point, we'll invite the public to weigh in and hear from the public, and then the next item under new business is consideration of the plan, which you all are not obligated to do tonight. I mean, if you all still need some time to curl up with it and get cover to cover, we can just table it if that's where you all...
Well, I don't, not the rest of the board. I've read it once, but I want plenty of time to read it thoroughly. It's excellent, by the way.
Sure.
My first reading, but I want time to get into the meat of it, and I think maybe we might do that next meeting.
Okay.
To take that fan, at my suggestion and set the agenda, but it's really good. You've done a good job, quite frankly.
So we are required to hear from the public, so we could go ahead and accomplish that at this meeting?
Who'd like to start us off? We'll kind of keep it time limited. We won't put a time limit on, but if, we'll give everybody a chance to be heard and onto our new plan. Oh, I got a question I want to ask you. Will your plan incorporate the CAMA plans at the same time? You can answer from right there. That's a good question.
Yes, sir. Yes, it's intended to be a guiding document for the town as well as meet the requirements of the Coastal Resources Commission.
Good, excellent. Anyone like to lead it off? Take what he said as gospel and go with it? All right, that's what we're gonna do then, Melissa.
Okay.
If the board will indulge me, I would like to table this, the consideration of the plan till the next meeting in September, July.
We could do it later in the month or really whenever, however much time you all need, but I do want to say that since we do have Jay with us tonight...
It's so important. This, this is a big, big deal.
Absolutely.
We don't need to rush into it.
That's right.
With similar conditions? I don't know if any of the commissioners want...
That's what I want. That's what I ask. The commissioner wants, yeah, the commissioner needs to get into it.
While we have Jay here, though, if you all have specific questions for him, he's here tonight, so if you have specific questions, you can ask those tonight, or send them to me, and we can field them in the meantime. But, but we have Jay and his expertise available this evening, so if you do... this evening. So if you do have some questions, feel free to go ahead and ask them.
Yeah, I didn't mean the commissioners to close out because commissioners run the meeting. I don't. I don't even have a vote. So whatever y'all want to do, jump in.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that there, I think this is wonderful. I mean, so much data, data points, information, and to a form that is really understandable. And I think the public will be really happy with this as well. There are some other data points or information that could be included in the appendix. Is that correct, Jay?
Are you speaking of, like, past presentations?
Yes, yes, correct.
Yes. We can, just on the record, but yeah, I don't know if you would necessarily want to put that in the appendix at this point, but we can definitely make that resource available. And it could kind of be a companion on the town's website that kind of lives and could be, you know, molded maybe into different shapes as it needs to become kind of an executive summary. Because it is, you know, it's almost 100 pages. And that's before you throw in the survey, which was definitely part of the process. But yes, we can make that available.
Yep. There was just one, what was it? It was a PowerPoint that I thought was exceptional that we worked on one night that you all presented. And I thought that would be good information for folks. So if you could send what you've got, then we can pick through it and, as you say, make an addendum document. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. If you would, why don't you just stay right there so you won't have to jump up and down and answer questions for the board?
My question was in here, and I was trying to find it, that Manio is built out almost eighty-five, excuse me, 85%? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think you're referring to the, kind of, the land supply summary, basically.
For new construction and development?
Yeah, really looking at vacant parcels, really. Yes.
So not redevelopment?
Correct, not redevelopment, yes.
So then that leads me to the question that Melissa and I had a discussion with, that I think we've all heard these numbers of our capacity with our sewer. And I don't know if that would be you, but I feel like this board needs to have somebody who can give us concrete numbers on our build-out capacity for our current sewer system. I do believe that everybody that lives in the limits of Manio should be granted, you know, the rights to build and have enough sewer capacity to build what they want to build. But we also have to think about if and when another entity comes and asks for annexation with the desire, obviously, for more dense construction, they need sewer capacity. So I don't want, I don't want to necessarily hear it from somebody down the street or somebody, you know, I want to hear it from, and I know we've used green, but I don't know if it's maybe time to think about somebody else. But I, to me, to make comfortable decisions down the road, because I know they're coming, I'd like to know what that percentage actually is before we make an ever decision for annexation outside our current town limits.
So, yes, I agree with you. And to that point, we have been working with grain engineering, who developed a tool for us to use that tracks, one, our monthly reports that we send to DEQ and they certify with our discharge reports. That's what that is. And so we know that we operate around 53% right now. But that, and that tool is very helpful. The data that we used originally for the tool is a little bit older, so we need to do some housekeeping where we update with new construction, because there are some vacant parcels that are no longer vacant that are included in the tool. So we have some housekeeping items on that tool. But that was the idea of developing this with the engineers, was that we could have an idea of where we are with getting so close to having land availability issues. So the second step of that project that we've been working on is not just identifying how much we have available in capacity, but also how much we have available of carrying capacity, how much sewer we can move through our pipes. That piece of that project cannot be concluded until our sewer pump station at the waterfront construction is concluded. So we're kind of in a holding pattern until the construction ends there to figure out our carrying capacity, because we just don't know. We have a capacity of treatment that we know our plant is permitted to treat, but the two need to go together. So the second part of that project will happen once we're able to have that new pump station online, because it'll certainly be a different calculation than it is today. So I'd be happy to show you that tracking tool at some point. But we do need to, we need, there's some housekeeping that needs to be done to it.
Well, I think it's, I say annexation, but I think, you know, we've got some things on the horizon where people are wanting to create a lot more density that are already in the town. And it would be helpful to know, and that'd help make us base a decision on it as well.
Yes.
But thanks.
Can I pop in now?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a lot of questions. I thought, I studied like a test, so I have like a lot of highlights. And I'm glad to hear we have more time to ask more questions and I could also just reach out to you. I don't know if you're familiar with Strong Towns. Have you ever heard of them?
Love, some Charles Maron.
I have been watching so much of that content, preparing for this, and the classes are phenomenal. Like, you really can learn a lot about land use plans. I've been looking for sidewalk and transportation calming measures, as it says in here. And as a consultant, you're solution-oriented. We hire you to help us come up with solutions, right? So I, in going through the general theme of this, I saw two huge things. One, sidewalks, connectivity, biking, pedestrian-friendly. That's hard. That's hard on an island that's almost developed. So we have to cut into things, change things. I've been talking to some citizens on Devon Street, just to ask them, "Hey, would you want a sidewalk? Would you be okay with us taking some of your land as the right-of-way ordinances?" I think it's in our planning ordinances, our right-of-way is 10 feet, I believe.
It's larger. It's usually 30, a minimum of 30.
Oh, it's 30?
For the entire right-of-way?
Oh, it's 30. Yes, it is. Yeah, sorry.
I'm saying wrong.
I was thinking of a 10-foot sidewalk being possible in the 30. Yeah, it's 30. So we have the capability of doing sidewalks. It's just if our citizens want it, because we are servants of the citizens. So if a citizen say, "You have the authority to do this. We want you to do it," we do it. So we need a sidewalk plan. We need a really good one. An alternative transportation plan, many moons ago came in some meeting, that there was a proposed road that went from our government building all the way to Airport Road. It was a secondary road, like the beach road and highway, essentially. That has so many issues. I've talked to so many people about it, and they don't want traffic dumping in the neighborhoods. What if we did what Amsterdam, Amsterdam does and did just a bike, a bike road, a pedestrian and bike road that goes to that neighborhood that encourages connectivity that is not automobile-driven? So I was thinking, if there are, if we can brainstorm big things like this, I hope that Stewart is the kind of organization that could maybe help us map that out. And then also, one big thing, one of my favorite issues is cleaning up Shalabag Bay, and oysters are super filters. I see in here a conflict where it says, "Improve water quality in Shalabag Bay to allow shell fishing. Major plan recommendations."
Yep.
What does it say back here? It says, "Improved areas are consistently open for shell fishing, while prohibited areas such as Shalabag Bay are permanently closed due to conflicting uses such as discharges from the marina and WW, the wastewater." So how do we open up shell fishing that our citizens want us to do when it's permanently banned? Permanent in government is subjective, but, you know, there has to be some kind of plan there. So I've been talking to Eddie and a lot of other people in the area. If we have oysters that are not for consumption, maybe that's a step towards that. So just a thought. But I just saw that juxtaposition in your plan of, I kept seeing everybody wants water quality cleanup, shell cleanup, the ultimate cleanup is oysters. How do we get around that legally? So, just a thought.
Yeah.
You, please.
Okay, let me start with the pedestrian stuff.
Yes.
You guys have a great walkable environment, and for the most part, it's pretty well-connected. Definitely a secondary road would be great, but obviously the challenges you're aligned are real. And, but that's a great solution. A lot of towns about your size will go for those NCBOT bike or PED planning grants. And while those are useful, in my experience, I would just recommend you just map out your sidewalks, prioritize where you want to fill them in, and start paying for it. Because it's a very prescriptive process. And although it does, you wind up with a beautiful planning document, but you might have been better off using your matching funds to just buy some sidewalk. Because nothing gets things done like budgeting for it and paying some money for concrete, you know? And you're right. I think it definitely, a part of that prioritization process could be a community event where we talk about our priorities and what we want to hit up first and what areas we want to connect first. And certainly, you know, I always start like anything within a mile or two of a school. Let's just make it so the people that can't drive can go where they need to go for their jobs, right? Kids can walk to school and bike to school. That's a great start. And that can do a lot. And then get people to where they want to go anyway, which is usually downtown or some other center. As far as Shalabag Bay, that was, it was not the easiest not to crack, and so we didn't actually crack it, which is kind of beat it up a little. It's my understanding that as long as the wastewater discharges in the bay, it won't be ever open for swimming. That's unfortunate. But there's also a marina there, which is also a contributing factor, but also a defining character of the town. We toyed with a recommendation along the lines of like, maybe someday if you decide to upgrade, do some major wastewater treatment plant upgrades, you would pump it to the backside of the island instead of the bay. That's theoretically still possible, but it's, you know, that's probably a feasibility study away and then some long-term budgeting and, you know, capital improvements planning and deciding if it was even worth it and maybe even some water quality modeling to see what kind of, what the impact might be.
Yeah.
And as far as oysters, I mean, they, obviously, great filters. And there's a big push for oysters in the state. And maybe, you know, Manio, maybe Manio Gold is gonna be the next oyster variety that hits the market, right?
A girl can drink.
Yeah. Yeah. So, but with the wastewater one, we kind of just, I know y'all are going through a lot of stuff in terms of making sure you get a really good handle on the INI and what that does to your capacity at the wastewater treatment plant and understanding what build-out might look like and what the future might look like and how much more you might have to accommodate. But also, I did see the fish swimming around in the wastewater treatment tanks, which is a pretty good sign, I think, that it's pretty good water. So, you know, I mean, if fish are living in the effluent, that's a pretty good sign, just a tank of effluent.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else from the board? All right. Thank you so much for coming. You're still doing great work.
Thank you very much. I can't wait to be back out here again someday.
All right. Melissa, we got to do.
So.
We got to close. Are we out of public comment?
Well, I don't, I don't think that y'all did close the public hearing or.
Do what?
We should get a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, you can open and close it.
Okay. And then what, do you all want some additional time?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Would you like to do it at your mid-month meeting or your first meeting in August?
Also, for me, first meeting in August is more time than we're sold.
Okay.
All right.
Why did you say first meeting in August?
Oh, okay.
Set it for August.
Yes, sir.
Is there a time constraint with you?
We have a land use plan in place. Of course, I think for you all to take the additional time to weigh in only makes the document even better. So let's do that. There was, there was in the 160D legislation, a requirement that towns, in order to continue practicing zoning, have a plan in place by July 1. We do have a plan. It's just old. But we can, we can continue on this track. And I think we're okay.
Well, to be sure, anybody, anybody will give us 30 days, to be sure, something that's important.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion, Melissa? I don't know about that.
I believe you have consensus to go to August.
We did?
Yeah, I think everybody, I don't, I don't see anybody objecting, so I don't think you need a motion to put it on to August.
All right. Well, we'll set the meeting for the first meeting in August and continue discussions.
Yes.
And pass the resolution we're supposed to. Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
And I'll just note, in the meantime, if there are specific questions, we can coordinate those efforts or schedule calls with the folks from Stewart, the team from Stewart.
Oh, yeah, that's something, well, the board knows this, but if you want to talk to Melissa about any of this, just give her a call. Comes there.
Sure. Okay. So, item 8B on the agenda is designation of Main Street Committee members. And so this is back before you from the last meeting where you did appoint members of the committee. And so now, this is the opportunity to round out the committee. You can choose up to five additional members of that committee.
How many we got?
You have five.
All existing members want to stay in place, right?
And they, and you all did?
Yeah, we, we confirmed the five that were there.
Yes, sir.
Which, let me say this, I think the five are there doing an excellent job. And as the lady stood up at the public comment period, we just need to continue where we're going and keep on moving forward. Now, well, I think the five we have, we just need to name five more. If you want to do it tonight or think about it, the mid-month meeting is up to the board.
Let's do it tonight.
Yeah.
But I have it for tonight. I mean, I have somebody. I think you have somebody.
Can we hear them all? Are we at that point? Is that what we're doing right now? We're discussing the candidate?
Cool.
But we already have five.
You do have five. So you have five additional appointees, should you choose. You're not required to, but you can do up to five.
More.
I have a nomination. First of all, I just wanted to say that I am delighted that we have those five appointees. And I know that there are several of them here this evening. Jamie Anderson, Bill Massey, Rashad is over there. Yeah. So it's nice to have them here tonight to welcome any new ones, new members. But I do have a nominee for this advisory board for the Main Street program, and that is Garrett Bassnight. Garrett, do you want to stand up or wave or, there's Garrett Bassnight. Garrett grew up in Manio, and he went to Manio High School. And he graduated in 2021 from UNC Chapel Hill in environmental studies and planning. So after graduating, Garrett worked in outreach at the Environmental Finance Center. So he, he has got a background in understanding local government, how towns work, and also this connection between the environment and, and the town. So Garrett's interests, interestingly enough, are in the pedestrian experience, which we just talked about, and of course, the town's infrastructure, which we also talked about. And those are areas that he is particularly interested in. Garrett has been following this program, the Main Street program. He attended the fall citizen gathering where we did some brainstorming and some, some work on sort of encapsulating how you talk about us. And so he was there for that event. So I believe that Garrett brings a wonderful perspective that will definitely strengthen the advisory committee for the Main Street program in Manio. He's my nominee.
You want, how do you want to do this, Melissa? You want to pick five or pick one at a time?
I think that you could do it all at the same time, the motion at the same time.
We'll let him stand. How about let him? We'll let him stand, how about let him stand on the, uh, no, I mean, stand on the nominations now.
You are standing on the nomination.
He stood one.
You can sit down, but you can stand on the nomination.
I have one, and mine is a, another different approach, and what's his name, Melissa?
Charles McKinney.
Charles McKinney, he is the general manager, and he runs, uh, Shalabag Bay Apartments, uh, the whole complex down there, he's a businessman, uh, well-toon. He lives in Manio, uh, lives over here on the corner. Uh, he is new to Manio, he wants to get involved, and he is experienced in this field. And like I say, I, as y'all well know, I'm not hiding it. I believe in a strong environment, but I also am a strong believer in the business community, because without the business community, we will not survive. You got to have a mix, and you got to have it all. So, uh, he would be my nominee.
I would think Charles likes the environment though, because he likes to fish, so, that's good.
I'd, I'd like to nominate Michelle Lewis. She's involved handling with the Police Advisory Committee. And, uh, I think a little diversity on the, on the thing would help. Michelle Lewis.
Daryl took my nomination.
Daryl took your nomination.
Well, Rashid's all lay on there, isn't he?
She's on Facebook.
Yes, why, of course. I definitely would think he'd be a good one. Can we, is that correct?
Three.
Yeah, I was going to name, uh, nominate Burnley Cook. He lives downtown, he's lived downtown for twelve, thirteen-plus years. Uh, very involved downtown, uh, has worked at, um, still works at a couple of businesses. Uh, Avenue Grill, he works upstairs in Reynolds. Uh, but he is, he showed interest in, I think, um, being in the town, and he walks his dog every day, so I mean, I think he sees a lot, and he showed interest, and he as well has been following the program, so I would nominate, uh, Burnley Cook.
All right, that's four, I don't know, somebody.
Doesn't have to be five, I mean, just up to.
I'm still working on mine, it's Brian Brockway, but I don't know if he's excited to get into government. I'm like, come on, Brian, because he owns the bike shop, and that's a good angle. He talks to a lot of bikers, so, he's also a businessman, he lives downtown, so.
Oh, you nominated?
No, I just wanted you, just thought I'd say publicly, Brian, I'm going to tell him I said it.
I'm trying, I'm trying to stay in the middle.
I love the diversity already of this committee, that would sound really good.
Well, you want, no, we don't need, we need ten, we need another member.
We don't need them, we can, we can stay with nine.
You, you can stay with nine.
That's nine, yeah.
We set five to ten.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, let's stay with nine. All right, let me do this.
Do we have to do it tonight, Mayor?
Huh?
Do we have to have all ten tonight?
No, ma'am.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, can we have the nine by acclamation and settle just quietly, leave the other note, and if somebody has another member, we can do that.
Are you, well, Melissa's that good? I see your face.
Time turn.
I think that's, again, that as long as no one objects, it's consensus, it's, it's essentially saying that you would vote the same way. Uh, you don't have consensus if, if one person objects, and then you would, then you would need to vote on it. But if nobody objects, then you can act by consensus.
What, we can set the other four by acclamation, can't we, Ben?
Yeah, if there, if nobody objects to that, yes, sir.
Yeah, nobody objects, of course.
I'll do it, okay.
All right, can we have these four by acclamation? Somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, we've got the four members. Now, you, someone will have to recommend another member to, um, Melissa.
Welcome.
And all the others.
Garrett, you might want to introduce yourself to these folks, the ones that are here, yeah.
And then Rashad is right behind you.
All right, that's done.
Thank you.
Melissa?
Yes, sir, item eight C on your agenda is approval of designation of agent for Town Hall Generator Project. Um, and while this is typically something that we would put on the consent agenda, um, I, I felt like I should give a little explanation here. Um, back in twenty nineteen, we applied for a grant to North Carolina Emergency Management, um, to have a permanent generator installed here at Town Hall. Um, of course, we utilize Town Hall during, um, during events, um, as our emergency operations center. Um, and we have a portable generator that we use to keep, you know, the refrigerator going and those kinds of things, but, um, during hurricanes especially, it is hot in this building, and we are all in here, um, you know, in and out doing a lot of work. So, um, we noted this in our hazard mitigation plan as a goal, um, in order to, um, improve our resiliency here at Town Hall. Um, we received notification, um, a couple of weeks ago that we are, um, chosen as a recipient of this grant. Um, the state will actually come and, they will hire the contractor to do the installation. Um, but back when we applied, um, Mr. Ayers was named the designated agent for processing, um, the grant application, and we need to update that before we can move forward with the grant contract. So, um, we just need you all to approve this resolution that's before you, um, so we can get moving forward, um, on that project.
I'm moved to approve the resolutions to designate Town Manager Dickerson and Mercy Manager Thor.
Okay, I got a question. Did you get that, um, ID situation straight for the grant? Remember you sent it?
Yes.
You did, okay.
Second.
Go ahead, yeah. Oh, you did.
Okay.
All right, motion second, all right, we got a motion, second, state your motion again, I didn't hear it.
Uh, to approve, uh, Town Manager and the Mercy Manager as the designated agents for the generator project.
All right, there's a motion, now, a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it, okay, Melissa, you're the agent.
Okay.
Okay. What we set up, I put this on the agenda for general discussion of healthcare, uh, services for, we said Manio, but it would really be the island and everywhere else, because we are involved with county commissioners on this healthcare discussion, and we're on, also involved with the hospital. Uh, there's been several meetings and very productive meetings, and I see us moving forward ahead, but, uh, this is not for public comment, but this is an open discussion between the board, so we're just going to talk about healthcare for a little while, see where y'all want to go, see what you want to do, and see about Malcolm's idea, it might be a good one, that we have a, a group to manage this and handle it, and a, a very diverse group from, we can't get into county affairs, of course, and other people's affairs, we just can get into Manio's affairs, we got to understand that, but, uh, uh, I think we're going in the right direction, we need to just keep moving forward. So I just threw it on the agenda to open discussion between the board members. If y'all want to discuss healthcare problems, let's do it.
I'll start it off, I think that Malcolm made an excellent suggestion, you know, did you call it a task force or something like that, um, to work on this situation, because, and we needed to do it fast, um, and not to talk about it, um, we need to do it. I said that before, we in emergency, regardless of how anybody look at it, we are in emergency. I couldn't even get two prescriptions for family members who is sickly, um, today. So, the county, uh, we appreciate their help in any way, but I don't think we should sit back and wait on the county. It's Manio people, mostly Roanoke Island people that got the letter. So, um, I think our interest is greater than the county's, um, because we're here, Roanoke Island. So, I'm with Malcolm and the mayor forming a diverse group to hit this head-on. Uh, we got information from Mr. Walker, and Ronnie Sloan sent me a video, which to me sounds like you're switching out, you're switching one for the other. So how far are we really? Um, so if the board agrees to that task force, then we need to actually meet on it, discuss it Friday.
I think that's a great idea, Betty. Um, I absolutely support that as well. Um, I do think we need to figure out, um, how we do that appointment process, and, um, you know, yeah, and, and then also, um, how, how that group will work. I think they need, we need a scope of work for them, um, and a way to communicate. So, those are just details, but I absolutely think, well, I mean, Mr. Walker, who came from the, uh, North Carolina Medical Society Foundation, obviously, um, has a model that has used and been very successful. And so we might be able to get some guidance from him. Um, but I, I do think it's important, um, you know, how this group communicates to the public, um, and what we think about that. And then also, who, who will be on it?
I agree with you, Sharon, one hundred percent, but certainly we got Sheila Davis, who's the head of the Health Department, we got physicians, we got a pharmacist, uh, we could have a good representative group as a health care, right, whatever, whatever Malcolm call them, which would be good, but it'd be very diverse, which would be no politics or nothing, and a good old voice system, what have you, but you'd have a draw from very professional people.
And also recipients of care.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good perspective as well, and maybe a doctor.
Yeah, a doctor, definitely, yeah. Yeah, and I, oh, go ahead, Daryl.
So do we try to move forward with Betty's plan, uh, along with Sharon's?
Well, let's, let's all just kind of give our input.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I give, as much as Malcolm says this to me, I do give Malcolm credit, because we talked about this in the early days, and we got the letters, and we both kind of, like, looked at each other, and like, this, I mean, this is just something that us, we've never gone through, it was such a slap in the face. Um, and he took off with it, and has done a great job in rallying the forces, I give you that. You're a tornado.
Or hurricane.
But, a hurricane. But you have done a great job, you've gotten, you know, I want to say I still like Johnny, but man, dump me. I love Johnny. Um, but I do, I think we need to do this, if we can do it tonight, at least, uh, start on putting a committee together. But I would like to ask Malcolm if he would be willing to help put this task force together. And as the mayor had said, you had some great people, the man in the back, pharmacist, um, I don't know, and Dr. Young, uh, I think he would show some interest, and Sheila Davies. So, I mean, I think there's some great people out there who are ready to jump on it. And my other point is, and this is not against Viden, but you've, in the restaurant business, in any type of business, it's good to have more than one person. And I feel like we are dealing with Viden. And, and Viden might come through with this, but I think Viden being so big, there's so much red tape, they're not personable, I don't think, to the candidates who have come to interview. Um, and I, there is this other group, uh, which is Franklin Walker, who I'm very impressed with. Melissa's been in touch with him, and he's going to work with us to initiate this plan with this task force. And I think with the backing of this board, and we are all in agreement, that it is, it's, it's a, it's an emergency. I'm healthy, knock on wood, but there are a lot of people in our community that aren't just not healthy, but they're old, they're elderly, and they just, I mean, that's scary. I mean, to know you got to drive all-
What are you talking about?
Not the only one.
But, I mean, it's scary to think, if you've got to drive to Chesapeake, or Norfolk, or Edenton, or, you know, I'm just, I'm just going to try to ride the way long enough until something's settled, and I can hopefully be reinstated somewhere. But we've talked to this other group of physicians on the beach that I think are also willing to help with this. So, if it's Viden and XYZ, then that's even better, because it gives us a choice, and it gives us enough doctors, hopefully, that we won't be in this situation again. And, like I said, I don't know if we can do it tonight, but I would like to at least start with if Malcolm would accept the position to lead, or to start with a task force in working with Melissa and Franklin from Raleigh, and Dr. Legay's practice, or his input, and at least try to get this ball rolling, and not say, let's talk about it at the next meeting. I'd like to get the ball going tonight. And then maybe by our August meeting, you guys can have, give us some options to say, can we roll with it or not?
We, we can have a full report by August meeting. Eddie, you ain't said much, go ahead.
So, uh, I'd like to know what we could do as a municipality, can we incentivize, uh, land in some kind of way for, um, medical facilities to be here? Is there something we can do, um, as far as a, a tax break, or identify areas of land that could be used for a medical facility, and what we can do to help, um, get somebody here to put a medical facility here? That was the way I was looking at it, I'm going to say something's going to make you mad, but, uh, to me, this right now is a more important issue than, um, building more residential areas. We need to take care of the people that live here first before we increase our population and make this problem even harder in the future. Um, so, to me, this should be priority number one for not just this community, but for our people. But what can we do besides form a committee, I think we need to, we need to look to see what we can do as a town to either find land for, uh, a healthcare facility to build on, or is there some kind of tax incentive we can do as a town for a healthcare facility to be here? Um, you know, I don't know what the answers are, but I think we need a lot of other options besides just, uh, looking at it from the, we need to look at it from the building side as well as the, from that facade.
Can you give us an update on Mr. Walker's latest communication?
Yes, so I, I anticipated that the conversation regarding a task force would, um, come up this evening. Um, and so I, I asked Mr. Walker, um, for suggestions on, on what the, the makeup of that would be, and he said, um, that, and, and he called me today and has given some additional thoughts to this. Um, but his response was that, um, we need all stakeholders represented, the town, the county, physicians, a patient representative, and that ECU will need to be involved. Um, and so that would, that would be a reasonable start. Um, and to Commissioner Mann's point, I think that those are the kinds of things that that task force could look into. Um, and, and of course, having Mr. Walker's involvement to guide us into what they have seen, um, as, you know, successful models in other places. Um, he, he mentioned, when he spoke to us, that he, um, he have, had seen this model of a group be successful in Rockingham County. Um, you all know that I was away at the manager's, um, summer seminar the day that we met with him, um, but I ended up having lunch with two individuals from Rockingham County and asked them what they do. And, um, the former Rockingham County manager said, you know, when Cone Health, who was their healthcare partner, um, was closed in recruiting doctors, they had a group of people that, you know, took these folks on field trip, really showed them the community, and so, um, kind of rolled out the red carpet for them. That was, that was his, um, you know, perspective from, you know, how you, um, really show off your area. Um, we certainly have a lot of those things to show off. Um, so that, that is what they told me, and they said that, you know, Cone Health drove that process. Um, and, um, that was kind of where my, my question began with Mr. Walker, and, and that's, you know, of course, the statement is that, of course, ECU health will need to be involved, um, in some way. Um, is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay, Daryl, jump in.
The, the presentation that Mr. Walker gave the other day was a real powerful presentation. Um, and there he said that the average medical student, when they- And there he said that the average medical student, when they finish everything up, they end up $200,000 in the hole. He said his organization pays up to $70,000, maybe only increase it to $100,000. So I think we, uh, maybe we could maybe sweeten the pile a little bit more, put money in the budget and say, if a doctor comes here and he's, maybe every year, we could maybe pay $10,000 to, towards his, uh, his student debt. I think that would enhance him to stay or her to stay. So I think we need to maybe put some money into the budget right now, just put our money where our mouth is, boys. Even if we're not using, but just put some money in the budget right now.
Ruth?
I like, I love that idea and get the word out there. Begin to somehow work through the chains, the league of municipalities, get the word out there that Manio is going to roll out the red carpet for healthcare professionals because Dr. Pharoah, despite, you know, what Todd said, he lost his doctor, you have a sparkling reputation in this community and people seemed fine that, you know, they were let go. And it's because of your patient care. I've heard all these stories about how great your patient care was. And then I've heard what was happening in Viden and it was holding back doctors. So, so yes, we as a town need to make sure that the doctors have the red carpet rolled out for them and they feel invited, but we have to do something. We are not, it, it doesn't matter if this is David and Goliath, I welcome that. We have to be firm with Viden about the type of care we expect on this island, bottom line. And if they won't provide that, we will push back until they do because that's the purpose of government, to do good by the people. And the 15-minute time limits with the patients or whatever kind of protocol, I mean, I've heard outrageous protocol and that's gossip, I do need to get the correct information. But it's too repetitive for something to not be there about what was happening with patient care. So if we do have a subsidized medical facility in our town, there needs to be some kind of accountability regularly, so. And also, does the governor know about this? Because I'm not convinced, 2,418 is the number they gave us. I have talked to 100 people who had letters handed to them in person. They weren't even mailed out. One got a generic letter and she cried as I talked to her. So there's 6,000 people on Brenoch Island, I think, something like that roughly. I think a lot more people than just that 2,400 ended up getting dismissed. And I don't know, I just think this is really crummy and the governor should know, that everyone should know. Like, that's the, the problem with the younger generations is they would have put Viden on blast. It would have been on TikTok, Snapchat, they would run them through the mud. We're gonna handle it a little classier than that, but the truth is, the wrong person gets wind of this story and they're gonna have a lot of mud on their face. So they should care that there's 3,000 people really upset in tears or carrying baseball bats to the facility that they ejected them from. And that's the truth. There was officers stationed there because the, the doctor that was there didn't even feel comfortable walking to their car and people were coming in disgruntled because they couldn't get their medicine. There is, this is not a healthy dynamic, what we have here. And so, yeah, I agree with Eddie 1,000%. We cannot even grow until we solve this problem. It's like, that's not logical in city planning, so I'm mad at Viden, sorry.
Well, we're not gonna solve the problem until we appoint a committee. Todd, you want to make a suggestion?
Well, and really quickly, the ECU Health, how do we get them to respond? That was my whole point in that rant.
Well, you got a response, he didn't show up.
Well, no, they didn't respond to us though, did they?
They did, yes. And I have, I, I have a timeline that I wrote, that I'd be happy to provide to you all. But I did also today receive a phone call from the chair of the Outer Banks Hospital Board of Directors, who called to tell me that Ms. Test Judge, that she had travel plans to, out of state to attend a church conference, so that's why she's not here this evening. But she called me personally today to tell me that that's why she's not here. And she reiterated Mr. Sloan's update that he gave on, on a YouTube video. It was released on the first and Outer Banks Voice reported it on the second. But in that update, he reported that they have hired two doctors. One of the doctors, Dr. Worthing, will be arriving on July 18th and he will assume the patients that are currently being provided care by physician's assistant, Chris Handren. The other doctor is Dr. Erin Baker and she will be joining the practice in late October. They're sending out another letter that has a dedicated phone number that the patients who received the May 23rd letter, the phone line will only be open to those individuals. And so you call that line to get on the list, to receive care. And then they also have established an email address. And he's noted in the video that you can send questions to the email address and they will be answered in 48 hours. And it's info@theobh.com, I guess that's outerbankshospital.com. And so I, that is the update, the, the latest from Viden. I checked just before the meeting and I haven't seen any additional information. He did say there would be more information coming out regarding an update in the next head practice, but, so, and, and those are things that Ms. Judge reiterated to me. Those, those were the updates that she provided this afternoon when she called to say she would not be here.
Mayor, could I make one comment, please? I just wanted to support what both Commissioner Mann and Commissioner Stetson said because I think we should consider that the town of Manio may actually have funds that would help us actually bring doctors in here. And that is that we have received aid already. And the aid has come in the form of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. And those dollars have to be spent by, within the next two years, not three, because we're already one year in. But anyway, Manio received $232,000 for those, for that. And it's, it was a, um, what would I say? It, it's, it's, it's a fund coming from the federal government. So it's, it's not taxpayers' dollars locally, it's, it's actually aid. And this all came about because COVID was hurting so many towns. And so there are six ways to spend that. I've heard a couple I think that would fit, whether it would be Manio recovering from this COVID loss by purchasing property and offering it as a private clinic. Or, and working with independent doctors. So, or doing something that's like reduced or rent free, where Manio residents get the priority in terms of visiting the doctors. So it's just a thought, but, oh, the funds expire in 2025. So it's just an idea. And Melissa has more information about that fund. But to me, it feels like that particular kind of fund would be perfect for something that we're talking about. A crisis in healthcare brought the aid to our town and we would respond because so many doctors have left because they're overwhelmed by having to deal with the ramifications of COVID. Anyway, I, I'm just reaching out, you know, small, towns have done crazy things with that money. There's a town in Alaska that actually handed out credit cards to each of their residents to spend that money. So it's, it's actually a very flexible plan. You can read it on the National League of Cities website. They're the ones that really helped get that through. But it's just an idea, but all by saying, this is doable. This is in our hands, something we can truly act on and in a pretty fast way. So, I mean.
We have received, I think, half of those federal dollars.
It's like $400,000.
It is. And so you all, I don't have that information in front of me, but you all did a project ordinance for it recently. And, and the plan originally was to supplement the sewer pump station project with those dollars. But a guidance came out in January from Treasury that said you can actually do a lot more things. And so upon looking at that and as Finance Director Doughty was getting on board, we identified that the, the, there are some ways, if you spend the money, some ways, there are a number of contingencies, like projects, that you have to bid it a certain way. And those thresholds weren't met for the pump station project. So we had identified to do it through revenue replacement. And I think that you all took that action already. And so that has, has been done. But what it does is there, there are dollars that we could appropriate. We would need to, the time to prepare a budget amendment and to, to start some kind of fun, fund, wouldn't be able to do that this evening. But we could get it prepared for your next meeting and then move forward with, you know, creating the line item. But I, I would defer to the town attorney on what might be legal action for the town to take in this regard.
There are state constitutional limitations on some things that you're gonna run into here. Not saying that there's not ways to provide funding, but the closer you get to paying an individual doctor to come, the closer you're gonna have a problem with that, that there are areas with economic incentives. I'm trying to look, stuck with the phone, trying to see what I, you know, this is all kind of new stuff coming up, I'm trying to get ahead as fast as I can. But the best I can tell you is it's more complicated to give away money than it seems. So, and it always will be for local governments. But I think there are probably, there is potential to find ways to appropriate money that would be legal and maybe useful. I think the best thing for us to do from the staff attorney's side of it is to, we know that you want to do something like that. Let us look into the possible ways that, that you might be able to do that and come back to you at your next meeting to talk about how you could legally, you know, the, the mechanisms that you could use to legally appropriate funds that might be useful to you. Or as Commissioner Mann pointed out, you, you may be able to use land or some other fashion, that there may be the ability to have your own facility of some sort and to, to lease or, but the reality from my perspective is, I know all of those have potential issues and I don't know the answers for you tonight.
That's where I am. I don't have the answers and I don't even know where to go with this, except it would seem to me personally that the first thing we need to do, because getting seven of us together, unless we want to have a group, a bunch of meetings, that's all right, because I don't have anything else to do. But I still think Todd's idea and Sharon's too, is to form this task force and let us take, let them take the lead for us and under advice and guidance from them, tell us what we should do, where we should go. And it certainly can't be done overnight. And I certainly do not agree with taking out baseball bats against people. I'm trying to get harmony and unity between the whole medical profession and that's what we need to do. We need to come together for the betterment of the whole of people, residents. And we're talking really Dare County and a lot of these things, we're talking the island. And we don't have no business talking for them. We represent 1,500 people or 1,000 people and that's all. Even though we have obligation to the entire county, just like we're residents of Kildale, who we're nice heads is. And I just think the first move is to get this task force going and go from there.
What I would suggest, and Ben, you can let me know if this could be possible to make a motion, but if we at least made a motion to nominate Malcolm to head this task force and work with Melissa and Franklin on a group of people that would serve on that task force. And then our next meeting, or if we needed to do it before, we could do it. But they could work with Ben and Melissa and Franklin on all these issues that we're bringing up that could be a problem. But I think the first thing we need to do is get the task force to address these questions that we're talking about. So if it is the right time, I'd like to make a motion to make Malcolm Fearing head of the local Manio Medical Family Practice Task Force and work with Melissa, our town manager, to find out who they would want to include in this group and then report back to us and for our approval. And if we decide it sounds good with this group, then we move forward and they can work with Ben through the legalities, Melissa and Franklin through the further steps we need to go to get this going. Because I just, we need to roll. And I just think to have another meeting to talk about it, I just think tonight is a start with Malcolm and to work with others in this town, to come up with a few people, six people, seven people, I don't know how many it is, but we've got some smart people in here that know the medical profession, who I'm sure can come up with a solution.
All right, I'm gonna declare a motion in order. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right, it's been seconded, all right. There's a motion, a second to Todd's motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We have us a task force, we'll get started with it.
Mal, Malcolm, you are gonna do it.
You agreed to that, right?
I guess I should have asked you first.
I was wondering, did he even ask you? I was trying to get a look from him, is he gonna just shoot us down?
You don't have anything to do, Malcolm.
Sorry, Malcolm.
Well, I wanted to ask.
Thank you.
Ask Malcolm.
Yeah, go ahead.
Please go to the microphone though, so, so Jamie can hear you as she's doing minutes since she's not here tonight. Thank you.
Since I've been drafted, and, and I'll say this, this is probably the most important issue, other than my faith and my family, that I have to work on right now. It's my community. And then I have talked to hundreds of people to seek advice. And we have several of them in our miss right now. But I want you to understand the concept that I'm working under and will be working under. It's the whole, okay, it's the whole community, cradle to grave, engine care, private pay, Medicare, Medicaid, insurance paid, it's the whole. And until the whole is addressed, we don't have a efficient, caring practice of medicine that we are all accustomed to on the island. And I think we can achieve that. So I was thrilled, the doctor came out tonight, we, we spoke, I asked him a direct question, is family primary care medicine dead? Can it not be achieved? And that's, and that's the question. Because I reckon Bobby, you older than me, Darryl, you and I are the same age, so we're, we only know a couple of doctors. And it would be a wonderful legacy if we could address this issue and solve it in the way and delivery that we are accustomed to. So if you want me to do this, I want you to understand how I would approach it. And that is for the whole, okay?
Thank you.
Well, I think the board has put confidence in you, Malcolm. Thank you for accepting, I heard you accept it graciously. All right, let's move on now. This has been a pretty good discussion, it's opening discussion, maybe what I intended for the whole board to be involved and so we can work things out. Because like I said, there's seven of us and getting seven ideas together is hard, believe me. Everybody's got different thoughts and different ideas of doing things and getting seven of us together. Now, if we have to have emergency meetings according to Malcolm or whoever, we will call the emergency meetings, whatever's necessary to get this moving. All right, I don't have any comments. Betty, you?
No, I just wonder what timeline Malcolm's gonna be working with, uh, getting this task force together.
It has been struck by you and others as an emergency.
That's exactly right.
So it's immediate.
Thank you, sir.
Ruth, Jay?
Uh, just a couple things. Speed limit sign, I hate to just completely tangent, yes, the med- Speed limit sign, I hate to just completely tangent, yes, the medical emergency has all of our focus, but I also just want to mention some things, too. Speed limit sign, coming into town, the speed changes, they need a speed limit sign in order for their tickets to hold up in court. I wanted to see who owned, if that's us that need to be in charge of talking to DOT and getting that sign in place, but it's when it goes down to 35, I talked to one of the officers casually about it recently, one of our officers, and he said we needed a speed limit sign. Has that ever come up?
It did, at the last meeting, we had a discussion. DOT provided a map to us. Our town ordinance establishes a speed limit of 20 mile an hour on streets that are not the highway. But the appropriate agreements with DOT between, in order to accomplish that, the town needs to have agreements with DOT in place. We do not have those in place. So I am pursuing that work with DOT, I've been in contact with them, it's gonna take some time, but we have to get those agreements in place in order to enforce that speed limit.
Okay, one other thing about speed, all of the traffic calming measures, the bottom line, quick, easy solution was to lower speed. Lower speed all across the board, and that actually smoothed out traffic. It's a weird engineering, transportation science fact, but humans truly just, if you slow them down, traffic just kind of flows now. Check me on that, that's not my idea. Town planners around the world use that. So, other thing, the officers mentioned that a roundabout location at the elementary school would be the very best place to have it, just a thought, I want to talk through anybody else that had thoughts about roundabouts, maybe you probably have thought them through, but I just wanted to hear your thoughts on the roundabout there. One other thing, not one, we need to change the bell timer for the public comment, that's crazy. Jenna Hurdle's email, have we been following up, or what's the status on Magnolia Pavilion?
I haven't, based on the last guidance that I received from you all.
Okay, we do need to, we need to address that, you know?
We do have.
In some way.
Facility use agreements that have been pursued by other, like, I think we approved one today from 4H. It was gonna be holding a camp trash talks, I think is what it's called. So there are other uses that are coming up, they're temporary. But based on the guidance that I had received from y'all, we hadn't pursued any agreements.
I just wanted to make sure, like, as a town, we were not responding to somebody, like, making sure we kept them, you know, because it seemed pretty persistent. Oh, cat colony regulations. I've been going through our ordinances, and while we're updating them, I would like to have the whole board, or the town manager, whoever wants to, look into, you definitely, Section 91 of the Dare County animal regulation, or Dare County ordinances on their animal regulation section about cat colonies. I want to get ahead of this, I have a cat colony in my backyard, I talked to Animal Control about it. There's a thing called toxoplasma, that is awful, flies carry it around, you may not even know you have it, a third of the world has it, 40 million people in America, but it can cause problems with elderly, we have an aging population here who do like to take care of the cats, but we're an island, so we can get overrun. So I just wanted us to get ahead of our adoption of regulations here for feeding, because it's getting a little wild, literally, because it's attracting coyotes, you know? So that was my other thing. And then charter, I don't know if they're getting DDoS'd, Carl, I don't know if you know if they're getting DDoS'd a lot, but their internet is absolutely unstable ever since the other thing began in our area. So I just want to say, the public seems to notice, so as public elected officials, I think we're supposed to say that out loud so companies can hear. So if for some reason it persists, could we reach out to them and just say, hey, there's a ton of outages in our areas? Melissa, if that would be possible, just let them know that there's been a lot of local customer complaints over the last two weeks. So I think that's pretty much all I have. Yes, I believe so. Thank you.
Darrell?
Once again, I'd like to thank Malcolm stepping forward. I mean, some people talk the talk, but do the walk, but thank you. I'd like to thank the town for a beautiful Fourth of July event. I'd like to thank the town for helping us with our Juneteenth event, which was a success this year. And just thank all the employees of the town for everything they do for us.
Sure. That's exactly what I was going to say, too, Darrell. We have had so many events that have gone off so beautifully, and it takes so much behind the scenes for that to happen. Excuse me, so I just want to thank all of you.
And let us know if you need help, like Jamie Litchett.
No, sir, thank you.
Sure?
I would just like to thank Malcolm as well, and also reiterate what Darrell, and we all, I mean, the Fourth of July was fantastic. And it is, when you see those guys working so hard, and Michelle and everybody working so hard, Melissa, it does, it makes you, it makes you smile. And I think taking it to Festival Park again, that was a big hit, so congratulations on another event, well done.
Thank you.
Well, you can thank Melissa and Michelle for moving it to Festival Park, and I think it was also a great hit, and the fireworks are terrific. And I can't say enough about our town employees, we got a terrific group of people working for us. And our town workers, they're just unbelievable. You look at the streets now, if you saw the streets 10 years ago in Manio, they were absolutely filthy, there's hardly any dirt on the streets now from our workers, and they're doing a great job. And Matt, I hope you got a good sense of what's going on tonight, this is your first meeting to attend, and congratulations on being on board, and we're looking for great things out of you.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
All right, we will recess until the workshop, when is it? Who's?
It is July the 20th at 5 o'clock.
All right, July the 20th, 5 o'clock, we stand adjourned, recess.